Good evening and welcome to the April 13th meeting of the Florissant City Council. I would ask you to all join with me and Cub Scout Troop Number 829 in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Before we begin, if you would like to make a comment at the hearing from citizens portion of the meeting, I would ask that you complete a speaker's card located on the table next to the entrance of the chamber and forward same to Attorney Mr. Hessel. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Lee?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputo?
Here.
Shildorf?
Here.
Henke?
Here.
Pagano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. Item number three, Mr. Hernandez makes a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 23rd, 2015. That is seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The minutes will be approved. Item number four, Resolution, Resolution Number 977.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Councilman Ben Hernandez for his nine years of service as Council Representative for Ward 9.
I will make a motion for a second reading of this resolution, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Councilman Ben Hernandez for his nine years of service as Council Representative for Ward 9.
Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a third reading. That is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes.
Shildorf?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez? Yes. Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Councilman Ben Hernandez for his nine years of service as Council Representative for Ward 9.
Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes.
Shildorf?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez? Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Councilman Ben Hernandez for his nine years of service as Council Representative for Ward 9. Whereas Ben Hernandez and his wife Christine of 23 years and their three children Lucas, 18, Logan, 15, and Lydia, 12, are 31-year residents of the city of Florissant and Ward 9. Whereas Ben is an active member of the Atonement Lutheran Church and the Atonement Men's Club where his children attended school. Whereas Ben currently serves as a president of the men's club at Lutheran High School North. Whereas Ben coached soccer, youth soccer and baseball through CYC programs at St. Norbert, St. Angela Marisi, and St. Rose Catholic Churches. Whereas Ben served in the United States Marine Corps Reserve where he earned the rank of sergeant and was awarded the Select Marine Corps Reserve Medal. Whereas Ben was first elected in 2006 and served as Florissant community for nine years representing Ward 9 in the city council. Whereas Ben cares about his residents and neighbors in Ward 9 and was quick to respond to their inquiries and worked to get problems resolved. Whereas Ben worked tirelessly to have a stop sign and crosswalk placed at the Halls Ferry Elementary School for the safety of the students. Whereas Ben's personal motto is always treat people as I want them to treat me. He has lived up to that motto in his service to the city of Florissant and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Florissant speaking for itself and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Florissant, congratulate Ben Hernandez for his nine years of dedicated service and wishes him great success in the future.
Thank you very much. It's my honor to be able to present this plaque to Mr. Hernandez. Before I do so, I just want to make a couple comments. One of the lines in this resolution speaks about how he cares for his citizens and his ward and of all the citizens in Florissant. I'm reminded of a story. I met a gentleman at an event who had an issue and he lived in Ben's ward up in Ward 9. And the very next day, I called Ben and told Ben about it. And within just a few days, Ben had gone out on a Sunday evening to talk to the man and to try to resolve his issue. Even though it was a Sunday and Ben had many family activities with his boys that weekend, he still gave up time to make sure that each and every one of his residents were taken care of. Ben's been a source of strength on this council and a source of support and wisdom for me and I appreciate it very much, Ben.
Thank you very much, Joe.
I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Ben, thank you for your service to our nation and to our community.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming into this evening, everyone. It's been a pleasure to serve the people for the last nine years. I started this year, nine years ago, with, was influenced by several people. One is Karen McKay, who's a former councilwoman. Ms. Nancy Lubieski. They supported me nine years ago to run for office. And here, I started the adventure nine years ago, winning my first election. I also want to wish to acknowledge Mrs. Zan Egan. She was my first meeting greet at her home to introduce me to the citizens in Ward 9. I always remember that as well. But one thing I'd like to mention is during my first elected official meeting, Creek Club manager mentioned at the election meeting that we had, he said to be elected is a gift. It's a gift to serve and represent people. And I always remember that because, you know, you give up your time. You give up a lot of time sometimes to represent the people along as trying to raise three children and married life and work and everything else that we all tend to do as well. So I feel good. It's been a good adventure and I've enjoyed it and met a lot of good people. See the Florissant as a good, solid foundation of people that work really hard and enjoy working here. And then there are Tom's administration for a second term. Everything, I think everything's going to be just great as well. So I appreciate everything. Thank you and good luck to all.
I thought you wanted to say something about Ben?
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know if we're, okay. I just wanted to thank Ben for his service to the city. He's had an opponent every time he's run for election and a couple of us up here have been blessed to not have to run the campaigns, but you've been very successful. And I want to wish you all the best personally and it's been a pleasure knowing you. I know we'll still keep in touch and just have a good time, Ben. Thanks.
Mr. Jones?
Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Ben, we former Marines and so simplify and good luck with your further endeavors.
Mr. Shildorf?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ben, I'd like to thank you for nine years. Been a good run. You're a good man and I'm going to miss you.
Mr. Henke?
Yeah, Ben, thanks. First year I'll call the council. Thanks for a little bit of guidance and watching how the council works. Appreciate your little bit of input that you have.
Ms. Pagano?
Yes, I'd like to thank you. You were the first phone call I received when I won election. And you said you'd always be there to help me and answer any questions. And you always were and you were always very honest. And I thank you for that.
Mr. Schmidt?
Ben, you've sat next to me for the last nine years and a senior member of the council. I've seen other council people come and go and I truly, honestly, want to say good luck. It's been a pleasure with you, with sitting with, next to you for the last nine years. And it's never an easy thing to see old council people go, but life moves on and we all move on. So good luck.
Thank you again. Good luck, Mr. Hernandez. Item number five, Certificate of Recognition for Boy Scout Troop 829.
On Saturday, March 21st, members of the Boy Scout Troop 829 and their parents volunteered for the 7th Annual Trash Bash Event that was held at Sunset Park. While participating in this cleanup event, someone heard a man that was trapped in the mud and was having difficulty getting out. The man began to sink further. Without hesitation, the Boy Scout Troop 829 and their parents responded to the location and began looking for large sticks and rocks to help rescue the man. After unsuccessful attempts to locate the rocks and sticks, someone remembered a large screen that the troop had dug out. Once the screen was placed on the top of the mud, two of the parents were able to stand quickly and quickly dig out the mud with shovels. They freed the man. 911 was called for precautionary measures since the man spent over an hour in the mud and was showing signs of fatigue. Paramedics checked out the man and he was found to be okay. This was a team effort and the scouts and their parents. As scout members, they are expected to help other people and they acted heroically. In addition to assisting with this rescue, they also won the biggest piece of trash, which was the screen to help rescue the man. They also won the most valuable item.
Who's the head scout master here?
Let me, okay. You want to say a few words about what happened?
I wasn't really prepared to talk, but I'll quickly say that obviously scouting is an important part in the development of young men's lives. And anything that I can do to help them become better citizens and to assist them as they become men with great character and good citizens for our community and develop into young leaders, that's my goal as their leader. But they're responsible for actually taking actions and I'm glad that they were able to do that that day without me.
Okay, so we have, just raise your hand when I call your name, Ryson Anderson and Colt Daly and Stephen Thompson and Trevor Thompson and Jake Wenzare and Connor Wilkinson and Alexandra Frank and Noah Wilkinson. Okay. And John Frank and Jenny Leverick. Listen, you guys have exemplified the mission of scouting. You guys thought fast on your feet. You saw somebody in trouble and you reached out to help them. Boy Scouts is such an honorable, wholesome, and noble endeavor. And we wish you guys all the best and congratulations on this event, which drew attention, very positive attention to your generation and to scouting. Thank you, guys.
The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. Again, please understand that this is not a question and answer period. This is a period for you to address the council on any matter you so wish. If you have not filled out a speaker card and you wish to address the council, please do so at this time. The yellow speaker cards are located on the table next to the entrance to the chambers. And please forward to Mr. Hessel. Mr. Manginelli, good evening and welcome. If you'd be so kind as to advise your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Okay. It's Paul Manginelli, 1600 Estes. We'll have to make sure I'm here later so I'm not the first one up next time. But I'm just here tonight, a week from Wednesday, April 22nd, is the first Florissant Food Truck Nights food truck event that I'm sure everybody knows about. I just wanted to, for everybody watching at home and here in the audience, to take this opportunity to promote it one more time. It's going to be a great event. 14 different trucks. We're going to have live music. But the part, the most important part of this, what we are really promoting this year, you know, I should say also, I do want to again thank the city for its co-sponsorship, sponsorship of the event. Things like barricades, extra tables, we'll have seating for about 1,000 people, which no event in town will have this year. And then there's the bands, the band shell as well. We, the Knights greatly appreciate all that help from the city. But the big, again, what I was starting to say is the biggest thing we want to promote this year is the canned food drive for the Team Food Pantry. This was something that was thought up actually by the mayor, Mr. Schneider. He came up with the idea and we've run with it. We've had, you know, a few carloads of food go over and, you know, quite a bit of money go over from the tips from the bar, go over to the Team Food Pantry. But this year, we want, I really want to have truckloads of food go over to Team. It's a very important part of this community. Something that, you know, may be in jeopardy with the license office. Let's hope that appeal goes our way. But again, thanks to the city. Hopefully we can have a large group of people come out, have an accessible night for the Knights, for the city, and for the Team Food Pantry.
Mr. Manginelli, what is the date and times again of that event?
Yes, the date is Wednesday, April 22nd. It'll be from 5:00 to 8:00 in the evening.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven, Communication. Clerk, please read the communication.
Email dated March 25th, 2015, from Jeff Cook regarding Paddock Hills Plaza. 321 emails and one letter received regarding the breed-specific ordinance.
Thank you very much. Item number eight, Public Hearings. Public Hearing 15-04-007.
Notice hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of the Florissant City Code, zoning ordinance as amended, that a public hearing will be held by the city council of the city of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue St. Francois on Monday, April 13th, 2015, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To issue an amendment to B5 Ordinance Number 8016 to allow for the electronic ground sign for the property located at 475 with Highway 67. Citizens and parties with interest will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing, but calling 839-7630 or TDD 8395142.
Thank you. As a petitioner, Mr. Phillips available? Good evening, sir, and welcome. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Joe Phillips. The address is 1818 Old State Road M in Barnhart, Missouri, 63012.
Could I ask you to either take the microphone or try to speak into it because it's sometimes very, very difficult to hear?
I apologize. Thank you very much. Apologize.
All right, very good. The floor is yours. Go ahead and tell us what your proposal is here, sir. And you can use the device next to you should you choose.
We are here representing Brightworks Car Wash, which is the first car wash of its kind built in St. Louis. This is the, I guess, the start of their new endeavor here in the St. Louis region. I'm going to put something up here for you and hopefully I do it correctly. What we are proposing is a, I guess, what you consider a post sign here in the city of Florissant. It will have an electronic message center attached to that post sign as well. The message center is designed to meet all of the city's criteria as far as a hold time, as far as the proper dimming in the evenings as well. Honestly, it's the top-of-the-line message center that's built. It's a Daktronics brand sign, American-made sign. It is LED. It's low voltage. The header part as well, the Brightworks portion is also LED and low voltage. Generally, it's going to cost roughly $2 a day for the business to run this sign as well. So it's part of their initiative to try to keep the cost and the energy level, and energy consumption down as well.
I see no questions or comments from the council? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on this proposal? Evening, sir. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, my name is Kevin O'Donnell.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Phillips, you may want to stay up here. You may have a question you need to answer. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Florissant, Missouri, Ward 4. My question is, first of all, what is the distance for the sign? Is it within the city's allocated distance that a sign's supposed to be set back 40 feet? Second thing is, I don't, I really am tired of seeing all these flashing header boards because it's starting to look like the Las Vegas Strip. And we have enough distractions and I don't know what kind of, what kind of advertisement they're going to be running. They wash cars. They don't, they don't change diapers or anything else. They just wash cars. And I really am tired of, you know, if you look around, you've got Dearburgs right around the corner. You've got flashing boards at Rue A's. You've got flashers, the header boards over at Culvers, American Eagle, all up and down the streets. And these flashing signs are, no matter if they're dim or if they're bright, they're still distracting to a point. And I would prefer not having, I prefer not having any flashing reader boards, especially in that area where traffic is so heavy, because that is where traffic's congested from Lindbergh and Patterson down to Lindbergh and West Washington and Charbonne intersection. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do you want to address his questions, sir?
Yes, sir, and I appreciate his questions. First and foremost, the setback of the sign was as per the original B5 amended ordinance that placed it in a certain specific location on the property. So it is not 40 feet back. 40 feet back would put it in the parking lot and even closer than that would put it within the retention basin on the site, which is really not the most ideal setting for any type of ground sign. To be putting in any type of retention basin where water is held and moisture is held, it causes a lot earlier structural failure. So the sign is still shown in the original placement that the city council approved, I think, back in 2014, late in the year of 2014. As far as the flashing capabilities of the sign, any electronic sign has the capabilities of flashing. The city council, I do believe, has put limitations on any type of flashing on these type of sign. The sign will not be able to flash based on the city's, the city's current code and of that nature. Brightworks also, being the first of its kind as far as the car wash, they do want to display their type of services. It's essentially going to be a one-of-a-kind at the moment within the St. Louis region. They also have made plans at the moment that when the business shuts down, the sign will also be shut off. So they also do not want to give the appearance that their site would be open at 10:00 in the evening by having the sign on and having it display their messages at that point. So their plans at this moment are to turn the sign off when the business closes as well. So it will not be something that will be on 24 hours a day.
Thank you. See no further questions from the council or the floor. Ms. Pagano makes a motion to close this public hearing, as seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the meeting shall be closed, or the hearing shall be closed. Public Hearing 15-04-008.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the city council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue St. Francois on Monday, April 13th, 2015, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Sunrise Restaurants LLC DBA Denny's Restaurant to allow for an existing sit-down carryout restaurant with exterior renovations for the property located at 2925 North Highway 67. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing, but calling 839-7630 or TDD 8395142.
Thank you. As a petitioner, President, President, Mr. Lamar? Brian Lamar or any representative for Sunrise Restaurants DBA Denny's? Not seeing anyone. I will make a motion that we postpone this public hearing until April 27th meeting. That is seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Prior to the closing of the hearing, is there anyone in the public who would plan to speak on this issue? If so, now is a good time to come forward and do so. Not seeing anyone. I will then make the motion to close the meeting, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Public hearing will be postponed to the April 27th meeting. Old Business. Bill Number 9082. I'll make a motion for a second reading on this, seconded by Mr. Shildorf. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Mag Automotive LLC DBA Mag Automotive to allow for the operation of automotive repair shop for the property located at 8461 North Lindbergh.
I'll make a motion for a third reading on this, seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? I would just like to state that this business was a automotive repair business for many, many years and it serves so and not caused any problems. So I'll be supporting this this evening. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill the second, the third time.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Mag Automotive LLC DBA Mag Automotive to allow for the operation of an automotive repair shop for the property located at 8461 North Lindbergh.
Prior to a final vote being taken by the council on this bill, is there anyone present in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes.
Shildorf?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Bill Number 9082 passes and becomes ordinance 8130, 8130. New Business. Board Appointments. Mr. Henke?
Yes, I would like to nominate Steve Frank, 771 North Lafayette Street, to the Landmark and Historic District Commission.
That motion is made by Mr. Lee, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment will be made. Mr. Shildorf?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to reappoint Shonda White, 1845 South New Florissant Road, to the Citizens Participation Committee.
That motion will be made by Mr. Caputo and seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. The appointment will be made.
Thank you.
Mr. Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to appoint Monica Weidman at 875 Fifth
That motion will be made by Mr. Lee and seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment will be made. Mr. Jones.
Yes, I'd like to nominate for the Board of Adjustments Carol Edelman at 25 Eldorado, and I'd like to reappoint Steve Olds to the planning and zoning.
Motion will be made by Ms. Pagano, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Those appointments will be made. Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Loretta Ashford to the Citizens Participation Committee.
Mr. Schmidt will make that motion, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that appointment will be made as well. Item B, request out of Ward number four. A request for a beer and wine package liquor license for United Mart located at 2020 Patterson Road. That motion is made by Mr. Caputo and seconded by myself. May I have a, any discussion on that item? Mr. Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I have, I, don't get me wrong, I want this gas station, filling station here in, in the ward. This building has been abandoned for, or not abandoned, but vacant for two, three years now going on there. But only my concerns is, is the request for the beer and wine package liquor. At that, at this location, we have a convenience package liquor store, a, a bar, Coltrane's Bar. The convenience store is 148 feet from the filling station, and Coltrane's is 145 feet to Cold, or to the filling station. My only concern is having them three different spots right there so close together where you can purchase alcohol. But now, don't get me wrong, like I said before, I'm, I'm all for the filling station and the convenience store and everything else. I mean, it's great. We need it in the ward. We need, especially on that corner. And I appreciate the business that they want to do that. But that is my only concern, and that's, that's my feelings, hon. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
No.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
No.
And the requests, let the record request that the request pass. Out of Ward number three, request to transfer special use permit number 5149 from White Autobody, Inc. to White Autobody West LP for location and operation of an autobody shop located at 8300 North Lindbergh. I will make that motion, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? I would just like to say that this has been a autobody repair shop in Ward three since 1986. They do approximately 250 cars every month they, they repair. I've personally taken my automobile there, and they did a fine job. I understand that the new ownership is carrying on the traditions and service as the previous owner has. They anticipate over $7 million in business in the city of Florissant this year, so I'll be supporting this request. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect that the request pass. Ward number nine, request to transfer special use permit number 7257 from Halls Ferry Service LLC to AM and LB, Inc., located at 3575 Parker Spur for the operation of a filling station. That motion is made by Mr. Hernandez. Please go ahead.
I spoke to the petitioner. It's strictly a simple ownership transfer. The operation of the facility is not going to change at all. I patronize this gas station all the time. It's across the street, down the street from me. So I request approval.
Motion is made by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect that the request has been approved. Item number C, bills for first reading. Bill number 9085.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B-5 ordinance number 8016 to allow for the electronic ground sign for the property located at 475 North Highway 67.
Bill number 9086.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Sunrise Restaurants LLC DBA Denny's Restaurant to allow for the existing sit-down carryout restaurant with exterior renovations for the property located at 2925 North Highway 67.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, I would move to postpone this bill pending the public hearing.
Mr. Schmidt has made a movement to postpone this bill, seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The bill will be postponed until 4/27/15. Mr. Lee, did you have anything else?
Yeah. Should we retract the first reading, Mr. Hassel? I, I would like to, whoever moved for approval, I guess, yeah, I would like to undo the first reading. So however we want to do that, motion to reconsider the first reading so we can get it off the table.
The proceeding is made at the public hearing.
Correct.
The petitioner disappeared.
Yeah, so procedurally, is that the proper procedure?
Correct. Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider the first reading.
Seconded by?
There is a motion to consider the first, reconsider the first reading made by Mr. Lee, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
And now, Mr. Schmidt's motion to postpone would be in order, I believe.
Mr. Schmidt makes a motion to postpone the first reading until 4/27/15. That is seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The first reading will be postponed until April 27. Bill number 9087.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 5149 from White Autobody Incorporated to White Autobody West LP for the location and operation of an autobody shop located at 8300 North Lindbergh.
I make a motion for a second reading on this, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill the second time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 5149 from White Autobody Incorporated to White Autobody West LP for the location and operation of an autobody shop located at 8300 North Lindbergh.
I'll make a motion for a third reading on this bill, and is seconded by Mr. Caputo. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Please read the bill again.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 5149 from White Autobody Incorporated to White Autobody West LP for the location and operation of an autobody shop located at 8300 North Lindbergh.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Bill number 9087 passes and becomes ordinance 8131-8131. Bill number 9088.
Ordinance authorizing reduction of the budgeted, budgeted amount for the property revitalization fund account number 1050 Professional Services in the amount of $36,441.
Bill number 9089.
Ordinance transferring special use permit number 7259 from Halls Ferry Service LLC to AM and LB Incorporated located at 3775, 3575 Parker Spur for the operation of a filling station.
Mr. Hernandez has made a motion for a second reading on this. That is seconded by Mr. Caputo. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill the second time.
Ordinance transferring special use permit number 7257 from Halls Ferry Service LLC to AM and LB Incorporated located at 3575 Parker Spur for the operation of a filling station.
Mr. Hernandez makes a motion for a third reading on this, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Clerk, please read the bill again.
Ordinance transferring special use permit number 7257 from Halls Ferry Service LLC to AM and LB Incorporated located at 3575 Parker Spur for the operation of a filling station.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the council for the final vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Bill number 9089 passes and becomes ordinance 8132-8132. Bill number 9090.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $27,500 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 0350 Professional Services for repairs to the paddock estate subdivision
Mr. Hernandez has made a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $27,500 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 0350 Professional Services to repair, for repairs to the paddock estates subdivision entrance monument.
Mr. Hernandez made a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Please read the bill again, please.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $27,500 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 0350 Professional Services for repairs to the paddock estate subdivision entrance monument.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Please read the bill again, please.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $27,500 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 0350 Professional Services for repairs to the paddock estate subdivision entrance monument.
Mr. Hernandez made a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Please read the bill again, please.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $27,500 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 0350 Professional Services for repairs to the paddock estate subdivision entrance monument.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the council for the final vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Please read the bill again, please.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $27,500 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 0350 Professional Services to repair, for repairs to the paddock estates subdivision entrance monument.
Mr. Hernandez made a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Please read the bill again, please.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $27,500 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 0350 Professional Services for repairs to the paddock estate subdivision entrance monument.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Please read the bill again.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 5149 from White Autobody Incorporated to White Autobody West LP for the location and operation of an autobody shop located at 8300 North Lindbergh.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Please read the bill again.
Ordinance transferring special use permit number 7257 from Halls Ferry Service LLC to AM and LB Incorporated located at 3575 Parker Spur for the operation of a filling station.
Mr. Hernandez has made a motion for a second reading on this. That is seconded by Mr. Caputo. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill the second time.
Ordinance transferring special use permit number 7257 from Halls Ferry Service LLC to AM and LB Incorporated located at 3575 Parker Spur for the operation of a filling station.
Mr. Hernandez makes a motion for a third reading on this, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Please read the bill again, please.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $27,500 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 0350 Professional Services for repairs to the paddock estate subdivision entrance monument.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Bill number 9090 passes and becomes ordinance 8133-8133. Next on the agenda, council announcements. Mr. Jones.
Some of those are at universities, some of them are at coffee houses, some of them are at private homes, some of them are in prison, some of them are in high schools. But the whole community is celebrating the bard's work. And on April twenty-sixth, Sunday evening, at five-thirty at St. Ferdinand Shrine, Florissant will host its second Shake Thirty-Eight Event. We had one a couple of years ago, and this time will be a reading, Henry the Sixth. And I've already been given a part, and I'm going to challenge members of the city council to consider reading a part in Henry the Sixth, and this is going to be held at St. Ferdinand Shrine or Schoolhouse, depending on the weather, at five-thirty P.M. to seven, Sunday, April sixth. I'd like to invite everybody to check this out, it's a different form of entertainment. It's a reading, so people don't know their lines up front, but it is an entertaining event, and it's free. Now, to the children of the community, we had several events recently. We had at Hazelwood West Middle School, they had a career day, which I attended and enjoyed very much. Ward Three resident Devon Biddick, he's an enterprising young man, does a lot of yard work in Ward Three and other odd jobs, helped with a few election chores. Anyway, he invited me to their career day, and we had a very good day with their, other students that were there, and Principal Tony Brooks. And then, we have a couple of baseball. Today was opening day for Cardinal Baseball at Busch Stadium, and a home opener, and so it's fitting to announce that Ozzie Smith Sports Academy is going to be here on April twelfth. Well, let's see, April, I guess it was yesterday. Sorry about that. Hope they had, had a great weather. I thought this was next Sunday, sorry about that. Jackie. She's mindful of my time. But we also have Summer Playground signup, started on April first, goes through June third, and Summer Playground is from June eighth to July seventeenth, so that fills up pretty fast, so if you haven't signed up yet, get, get going on that. And then lastly, we have Mother and Sun Dance at the Nature Lodge on Friday, May eighth, and so sign up for that, up till May third. Thank you.
Your Honor, will you be appearing in periodic garp for that reading?